Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. The Council thanks you for being part of the city government. At meetings, the City Council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packages are available at the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-w.gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and go-to webinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, we will begin our Tuesday, July 5th, meeting. And can I get roll call, please?
Councilmember Campos.
Present.
Milne.
Here.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
And Barajas.
Present.
Six councilmembers present, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. And with that, would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, we move on to item four, Consent Agenda. Items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by councilmembers or the public, the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda to the regular Agenda and considered separately. With that, we have item A, Approval of Meeting Minutes. To approve the minutes of the City of Pasco Council Special Meeting held June 20th, 2022, and Special Meeting and Regular Workshop held on June 27, 2022, respectively. Item B, Bills and Communications. To approve the claims in the total amount of $3,825,136.11. Item C, Ordinance and Resolution Budget Amendment and Bid Award for Processed Water Reuse Facility Pretreatment Improvements Phase One Potable Water and Electrical Improvements. To approve Resolution Number 4196, awarding bid number 19055 for the Processed Water Reuse Facility Pretreatment Improvements Phase One Potable Water and Electrical Improvements Project to DePani Incorporated of Battleground, Washington, and further authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents. To adopt Ordinance Number 4595, amending the 2021-2022 biennial budget ordinance of the City of Pasco, Washington by providing supplement thereto to provide additional appropriation in the city's general construction fund for the construction of a PWRF Pretreatment Improvements Phase One Potable Water and Electrical Improvements Project. Item D, Resolution Waste Water Pretreatment Plan Phase Two Sole Source Purchase. To approve the Resolution Number 4197, waiving the competitive bidding requirements and approving the purchase of Centracys DHK200 centrifuge from the Centracys for the Municipal Waste Water Pretreatment Plan Phase Two Project. Item E, Resolution Lease Three Fire Trucks and Purchase Fire Ladder Truck. To approve Resolution Number 4198, authorizing the city manager to execute the lease agreements for three fire trucks from PNC Bank National Association for the cost of $2,724,255.71. To approve Resolution Number 4199, waiving the competitive bidding requirement and approving the purchase of a 2005 Pierce ladder truck from Fire Trucks Unlimited. Item F, Resolution Old Station Number 84 Facility Lease for Franklin County Fire District Number Three Use. To approve the Resolution Number 4200, authorizing the city manager to sign and execute the facility lease agreement with the Franklin County Fire Protection District Number Three for real property located at 120 Road 48, Pasco, Washington, and 4803 West Octave Street, Pasco, Washington. Item G, Resolution Police Department Strategic Plan. To approve the Resolution Number 4201, approving the Pasco Police Department 2022 Strategic Plan. Item H, Resolution Setting a Public Hearing Date to Consider the Rentingham Right-of-Way Vacation 2022-004. To approve Resolution Number 4202, setting 7:00 p.m. Monday, August 1st, 2022, as a time and date for the public hearing to consider the vacation of right-of-way along East Adam Street and North Rainier Avenue located adjacent lots 10, 11, and 12 of the FCID Industrial Park plot. And with that, can I get a motion?
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as read.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Pretam Maloney, seconded by Councilman Campos. And can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Milne.
Yes.
Roach.
Yes.
Serrano.
Yes.
Campos.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
Barajas.
Yes.
Passes unanimous.
Thank you for that. We move on to item five, Proclamations and Acknowledgements, none listed. Item six, Visitors Other Than Agenda Items. This item is provided to allow citizens the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the City Council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after a deliberative process with input from a number of different sources. Some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. And with that, I'd like to extend the invite to anyone in the audience. If you'd like to speak, please step to the podium, state your name and address.
Hello, my name is David Morgan.
I'm Shaila Morgan.
And address is 4125 South Pittsburgh Street, Spokane, Washington. We also have a home here in Pasco at 1827 West Octave. So we own a cannabis retail establishment in downtown Spokane called Lucky Leaf, and we're looking to do the same thing here. We have a license in Pasco, but there's an ordinance prohibiting us from opening. It's Ordinance 4166. It was passed, I want to say in 2014 by the council at that time. Our vision, and we've had the opportunity to actually put it to the test in the downtown area that we're located in Spokane. I know that you guys are working on a revitalization plan for downtown Pasco. So my idea is to incorporate cannabis into this revitalization plan that will attract visitors to the downtown area. And once the people are downtown, it'll attract more businesses to that part of town. And I see it as being a good fit. I don't believe there's, with the exception of a new alternative school, I don't think there's any schools or really any housing developments with younger families. So it seems like an ideal part of town, in my opinion. I know that you guys do have an issue with homelessness, which we do as well in Spokane. But once people start filling those empty buildings and businesses start popping up and people start coming downtown, it kind of pushes them away from that area. So they probably, hopefully, choose a different area. Let's see. I was hoping to see if the council would consider allowing me to do a more in-depth presentation so I can supply some more information to you guys and get a little more in-depth on the details of it. So the LCB pretty much polices or governs the cannabis retail establishments. We haven't had any problems with crime or anything since we opened, and we opened back in March 21st of 2015.
2016.
2016, sorry, 2016. So we've had some pretty good experience with the business and the industry, and all of our neighbors seem to really like us. And actually, the area that we moved to in downtown Spokane was kind of a crime-ridden area before we got there, and I was unaware of that because I wasn't very familiar with Spokane when we moved there. But since then, it was kind of a ghost town, too. They had cyclone fences around the streets or the sidewalks, so people weren't really walking through. There wasn't any traffic or anything. But now, it's really vibrant, like the whole, it's kind of, it was kind of a dead zone. So now it's all connected. You've got people walking past, businesses popping up, and it's really a cool part of town now. It's really changed since we've opened, and I really feel that we were a big part of that happening. So like I said, I was hoping that we could do something similar here with the revitalization plan. We did have somebody kind of revise the ordinance to allow for it in the C2 Zone, and that's just an idea. So you guys actually have the ability, if you were to allow cannabis, to zone it wherever you feel it would be appropriate. Let's see, what else? Did you have anything else?
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Your three minutes are up.
Oh, okay. All right. I was just trying to fill them, so that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wouldn't we recommend sending us an email if you guys wanted to give us more information as far as some crime statistics and that sort of stuff? You could send email to the city council as far as when we all get it and respond. That'd probably be the best way.
Okay.
I'll speak for the mayor, but.
Thank you.
I'll send you an email, and if you have any other questions or would like any other information, just let me know what that might be, and I'll get that for you. So thank you, guys.
Instead of us individually, we want that to go through the clerk and set up a time to come back later.
So if we can actually discuss with our city manager about getting him on the agenda and get the information across the board. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Carl Holder at 402 West Lewis, Mayor Barajas and City Council. 402 West Lewis was built by Seattle First National Bank in the 1930s. SeaFirst later built its large new branch across the street. Bank of America and SeaFirst merged in 1999. The Pasco branch of Bank of America is now closed, including the ATM, another nail in the coffin. Branches at Kennewick, Columbia Center, and Richland are open. In February of this year, I wrote to the city council, "I plan to assist to locate a retail cannabis store at 402 West Lewis, but it requires council approval." I hope that we now have council approval. During this time, I participated with Pasco Business Advisory Council, a major activity to modernize the downtown C2 Zone, which is approved by the council. Thank you, and positive changes are happening. The negative is going away with the purchase of the Thunderbird. The C2 Zone discussion, retail cannabis was discussed, and Lucky Leaf of Spokane made an exciting presentation. Tomorrow, legal cannabis is on the agenda. The City of Pasco Planning Department initiated, established downtown Pasco Land Use or the Comp Plan. I therein made a public comment. Downtown Pasco is, has, been in decline with many vacant-for-sale buildings and low retail sales. What is the highest and best use missing in the downtown corridor? Retail cannabis, a destination business. In conclusion, from the Washington State Treasurer in fiscal 2021, Washington State collected a total of $559.5 million in legal marijuana income, up $85 million over 2020. None of this money comes to Pasco. The trickle-down revitalization for local businesses a proven, very significant fact. I understand the fear of a criminal element, but the facts just do not support that fear. As of May 2022, 37 states have legalized the use of medical cannabis, while 18 states allow for recreational use. Delaware and Maryland are also on the list. Just say okay, and people will come. It's an opportunity to revitalize downtown. Tri-city residents and out-of-towners are buying legal marijuana, but they are going elsewhere. A local taxi company owner commented, "From Pasco, a high percentage of my business is taking rides to Finley and West Richland for retail cannabis. Let's bring them back. My property in downtown Pasco is devalued, while all the neighboring areas are enjoying vitality and increasing value. What path forward? Marijuana is revitalization so desperately needed." I respectfully request that the council adopt a change of permit use in the C2 Zone that will allow Lucky Leaf to receive a City of Pasco business license at 402 West Lewis. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
How's everybody doing? Thank you so much for this time. You know, I ultimately just wanted to present my name, Jose Inigas, from Hydrotonics Water 102 South Third. On realizing that things are changing, you know, there is now data that is being pointed to you all, that you can really come up with a critical decision, conclusion on how this is going to impact the community in a positive manner. I come from a conservative family, bottom line, I'm going to tell you that. You know, that education is number one. I could tell you right now, I could come from doctors, cancer research scientists, you name it. Things are evolving. And one of the things about David from Spokane, he has shown that he cares about this community, and he wants to help revitalize it by not only asking to be taxed even further, where he can offer services to this community. And that is something that you should look for in a partner that is coming in. Not only that can help any social services that is needed, but also the arts. Huge investment that is an opportunity as well. So I just wanted to make sure, and thank you so much for this time.
Good evening, Council. I'm Stephen Baumann from here in Pasco. Thank you for this opportunity. Wanted to share with you a project that quite a few in this room has been working on and share it with you at the council. You're aware of the East Area UGA expansion and the need for sewer. You guys have consequently put in place a LID to sewer that area. During that discussion, the discussion arose about traffic and the need for increased traffic capacity to that area. City manager and I had the opportunity to visit and discuss about that, along with some of the property owners. And so we started a discussion about tying Burns Road from the intersection of Road 52 to the east, approximately two miles to Glade Road. And then during that conversation, Dave brought up that we probably should tie it to Road 36 to the north. It's about a quarter of a mile connection that would then tie in the eastern edge of the Clark Edition. It would give us increased coverage for Fire District Number Three that's out there off of Clark Road, give them a lot closer access. And then as the discussion has gone on with additional stakeholders, a suggestion was made to potentially connect that Road 36 to the south, to where the Road 36 currently goes and turns and goes up the hill into Burden. So I wanted to make you aware of that. We've talked with our fire chief, with our police chief, with our sheriff. We've talked with the county, the city staff, and we have a meeting planned for the 12th. It's going to be here in the police conference room, and it's kind of going to be an open forum discussion on how can we do this together. We realized that we had the, most of the participants were in the room when we were working with the sewer LID. And so as that discussion was brought forth, we realized that we had the people that we needed to talk about the project. Nobody's individual project can justify putting in that two miles of road, but if we work together, that we could potentially make it safer for everybody. And one of the biggest things that I think that we will find as we study this, as we consider it, is the relief of pressure on Road 68. And so we know that we're growing. We know that it's heading north. It's the only place we can grow. And to be able to say that we have a potential little bit of relief for Road 68 would be a good thing. So consider that. If you're available, I'd love to have you participate in that meeting on the 12th here at the police room, and thank you for this time.
And what time is that, Mr. Baumann?
I'm sorry, I don't remember, but I will get back to the clerk's office with that information. Thank you.
I have it for 3 o'clock on my calendar.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Anyone else from the audience wish to speak?
Good evening, Council. Thomas Grandblatt, Big Maple Properties, 108 North Fourth Avenue. I want to echo my support, or everybody else's comments here, with my support for legalizing cannabis retail in the downtown. I think the C2 Zone creates a great opportunity, as was talked about. But I want to talk a little bit more about C2 Zone, what's allowed in terms of use, and the challenges that may happen with our revitalization. As we all know, the bar was set for what we could do and not do downtown by the zoning. And once that zoning was changed, the goalpost was moved and said, "Well, you're allowed to do this, but your buildings don't currently meet code requirements." And I think after talking with many business owners, we really do, business and property owners, we do appreciate the requirements for safety. And there was some discussion around using ARPA funds to facilitate those upgrades, to bring our buildings up to code so that we could help rejuvenate and revitalize the downtown. And I guess that was, it sounds like that is stalled. And I think that a lot of the business and property owners would also support a loan program if the city could help facilitate a program for loans, low interest. There's a lot of interest by us to do those upgrades, but we're so heavily invested in our properties or time that we just can't get over that hump to get that infrastructure built. To give you an idea, when we first started hearing about the sprinkler program, it took us over a year just to get a quote from a vendor on sprinkler systems. And now we understand the costs involved, and we just, we would love, the majority of us would really appreciate if the city could help us by putting together a program that then we could buy into, get our properties up to date, and allow for expansion and more exciting uses in the downtown other than strictly retail. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from our audience wishing to approach the council and make any comments? Seeing none, we'll move forward with our agenda onto item number seven, reports from committees and/or officers. Anyone have any reports about their past week? Go ahead, Mayor Pretam Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. I'll brag on your behalf, because I know you won't do it. But so yesterday, for our Independence Day celebrations here in Pasco, just what a wonderful set of events, from the parade in the morning to the car show in the middle of the day. I think we had the cardboard regatta that I still haven't yet to attend, but it's on my list of things I want to go check out and see what the heck that's all about, to the fireworks show. You know, I had an opportunity, I got to wait in the wings and watch the mayor at work, and she has just been absolutely tremendous at representing our council and helping celebrate the people and the being of Pasco. And I just, you know, I was just really thrilled to be able to watch her at work and see all the turnout of the people, the number of parade floats and participants, the number of people that lined up, even though the weather started out a little rainy, a little cold, which is strange for 4th of July, and still stuck it out and, you know, really enjoyed the festivities we all had. So anyways, it was a great event, a great set of, you know, the city hosted things, were just absolutely fantastic, and, you know, top-notch work from our Parks and Rec staff. I know I talked to Brent Kubalik, who I think he put in around a 20-hour day yesterday, and the dedication they have to making sure that these events go well and that the people of Pasco and the visitors of Pasco enjoy it is just top-notch. Just makes me fall in love with Pasco all over again. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Campos.
I don't have an actual thing to add just yet, but I wanted to skip to additional notes. I think I need to ask Crystal to remind me. I have a meeting with Ben Franklin Trans Operation and Maintenance Committee that like put on the reminders, happens every month, and it doesn't make the reminder list every month. So if I could get some help putting that on there, that'd be great.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilwoman Roach and Councilmember Serrano, you're online. Is there anything you wish to share?
I've got, excuse me, I've got nothing to add except that I did miss out on those Independence Day festivities. We do it right in Pasco. I'm out here in Knoxville, Tennessee. While the fireworks are better, I think the overall atmosphere of the City of Pasco prevails. And, you know, Knoxville not being a small town, I think we take the cake there. So kudos to staff and all those who participated.
This is Councilmember Roach, and just want to say, we definitely got to attend the parade, saw Councilmember Maloney there. I think we had something like 70-plus participants in the parade. It was ginormous. So the Pasco High Girls Soccer Team was kind of number 62 in the lineup. They didn't even get going until 11:00 a.m. because we had so many participants. So super cool to have people there. I wanted to be catching candy, but somehow got roped into walking. So got my steps in that day, and then the fireworks were spectacular, just beautiful. You know, Mayor Barajas, are you looking for any board reports right now as well beyond just the 4th of July?
Absolutely. If you have anything to share, go ahead.
Yeah, just briefly, that the Hanford Governing Board is, Hanford Communities Governing Board members have, you know, voted to approve a joint letter to Department of Ecology Nuclear Waste Program that, you know, asking for funding, $1 billion increase in funding for the Hanford cleanup. It felt like the, you know, the joint letter would be a better way of approaching the ask for funding as opposed to fighting over it. That's kind of just like a high-level view. I don't want to get too much into the weeds of it, but, you know, we did support that. And so wanted to give you that update.
Sounds good. Thank you. Well, I will share, it was a very beautiful, long day yesterday. Parks and Rec did an awesome job at organizing a wonderful festival for the City of Pasco residents. I took advantage of riding along with, or off-wheeling with Deputy City Manager Adam Lincoln, and we rode around and saw all the floats that participated. And I say off-roading because we were speeding. Thank you, though. That was fun. There was participants from Sunnyside, all the schools participated, Kennewick, Richland, dance teams. The youth had so much energy, we had to stop and take in some performances. So I was a judge this year. I did not participate in the parade, but I was a judge, and it was hard to pick one special float, one special group. Everyone out there did, outdid them. Um, everyone out there did, outdid themselves, really. Then, from there, we went to go see the car show, um, another great event that I had not participated in in the past. Um, so many car groups uh, got together and shared their, their pride and joy in their vehicles. Um, and then in the evening, um, was able to enjoy some family time with uh, Councilmember Maloney, sorry. Mayor Protim Maloney's family, um, my kiddo came around, and we were at the Geesa Stadium again, it was another beautiful event. Uh, the weather was a little um, windy and rainy early morning for the pancake breakfast, um, set up by the Kiwanis Club. So again, it was a wonderful family event, um, and I would like to invite, extend the invite to the rest of the city to come around next year. Um, it'll be better, I'm sure it will be, uh, but wow, it's, it's another event that you're gonna keep topping it off every year. Um, so again, um, thank you, Parks and Rec, Police Department, Fire Department, for being out there until wee hours of the night, putting out fires and keeping the city safe. Thank you, um, staff. And with that, we'll move on to item number eight. Hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating there to. Item A, public hearing continued, East Lewis Street, R O W Vacation, uh, twenty twenty-two dash zero zero three. Director White, you have some updates?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. And Council, we've seen this item before, it's a vacation request for Lewis Place, uh, directly west of U S Highway twelve. Um, as noted in the agenda report, the applicant staff have developed what we think is a means of both providing for the benefits of the vacation and also for reserving the appropriate amount of road right-of-way through an easement. However, the language that's necessary for that to occur needs to be developed, and that's the reason for the continuation request until the July eighteenth regular council meeting.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? All right, and can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor Barajas, I move to continue the public hearing for the East Lewis Place Right-of-Way Vacation, um, VAC twenty twenty-two dash zero zero three to July, to the July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two council meeting.
There's a motion, can I get a second?
A second, Beth.
Moved by Mayor Protim Maloney and seconded by uh, Mayor, uh. Oh my gosh, got a promotion just now, uh, Councilman, uh, Mill. With that, we move on to item nine. Oh, sorry, yes, we're gonna go back, and can we get a roll call vote?
Well, can, can we have some discussion? Uh, I tried to jump on, but missed that. I, I just simply wanna ask Director White, I know if I recall, last time, I believe this is uh, Mr. Baumann, who sounded like he was in the audience and spoke. Um, as I recall, he said that he was concerned about the timing of the delay here, is that something that, in addressing this, uh, the applicant's been amenable to? I understand this really is kind of trying to do a pro forma, clean up the language and expedite this, but now we're delaying it again to do so. Again, what is the applicant's position on that continued delay?
He's okay, thumbs up, uh, Councilman Serrano.
Okay, I appreciate that, I just, I just wanted to make sure, because again, I, if I recall, that was one of the concerns expressed, so with that, no, no further questions or comment.
Thank you for that, and actually, can we, um, everyone in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And it passes unanimously. With that, we move on to item nine, ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. Item A, public meeting, S E R P requirement for the wastewater treatment plant phase two, and we have Director Worley online.
Yes, we do, uh, Madam Mayor, thank you, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you, councilmembers and Madam Mayor, tonight I wanna uh, turn this item over to our Senior Engineer, John Pedbor, and he's gonna cover this topic for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council and Mayor, um, I'm here tonight to talk about uh, upcoming, upcoming project at our wastewater treatment plant. Can I get the slides up for that? Yes, and the name of the project is our wastewater treatment plant phase two improvements. Next slide? Oh, perfect. So, uh, this is a quick outline of what we'll be discussing, I won't keep everybody too long. Um, we'll talk about the purpose, the notifications that were given for this meeting, the project description, current status, and possible impacts. So, the purpose of this meeting is our project is pursuing federal funding that requires community environmental justice outreach, when there's a project that occurs without funding. And the purpose is to make sure that the community is made aware of the project, made aware of any possible impacts, and given the opportunity to comment to the city regarding alternatives to be selected and possible impacts, um, to make sure that federal dollars are being used in a socially conscious way in communities. So, the purpose of this meeting is, uh, we already performed the outreach, and it gives the community to comment on the project, and it satisfies the requirements as we can pursue funding for this work. So, to facilitate notification, uh, mailers were sent out to residents and property owners, uh, potentially impacted by construction in both English and Spanish within the hatched area of this map. Uh, notifications were posted on the city's Facebook page in English and Spanish, and signs were posted at the project areas. And there were two newspaper advertisements, um, that had Spanish interpreter information provided. So our project will consist of uh, improvements in two areas, the first being in the uplands area, which is marked by that squarish blue shape at our wastewater plant, and the second being an outfall out in the Columbia. So there's two separate project locations. Um, within the plant, we'll be doing several improvements, including a new solids handling building, modified polymer building, eccentric pump station, U V replacement and expansion. And then down in the Port of Pasco property, we'll be continuing from our phase one work with a new outfall into the Columbia and a diffuser in the Columbia. So this project accommodates growth and allows Pasco to continue to grow unhindered by our municipal utilities. Uh, as you can see, and as you guys are well aware, the city of Pasco is growing rapidly, um, and we need to be working rapidly to keep our facilities in pace with that. We looked at a couple different alternatives for construction access, uh, either off of Ainsworth or through Washington Street, and coordinated with the Port of Pasco and the design team to figure out the best approach for the, the property owners that could be impacted, which is primarily the Port of Pasco and also the neighborhood. Um, and also what would, what would do best for kind of neighborhood traffic patterns. And we also worked to make sure that the Sacagawea Heritage Trail had access, uh, we looked at a couple alternatives for that, Ainsworth and Washington Street. Neither construction access or Sacagawea Heritage Trail access had substantial economic or project impact or social impact differences. We mostly just worked to find the, the opportunity that would work best for the community, and it was the most economical for the project. So currently, the design is complete, and we're in the process of going through the regulatory, regulatory permitting process, and there will be some outreach associated with that as well, separate from this process. Uh, permitting is underway, and we're pursuing funding, and we hope to start work in the spring of twenty twenty-three and continue through twenty twenty-four. There are some possible impacts to this project. Um, in terms of environmental impacts, we'll mitigate those by uh, the disturbance from construction being restored. Uh, there'll be noise and dust control in accordance with city ordinances, and um, having the upgraded facility will ensure that we can have continued compliance with our wastewater permit for discharge. In terms of social impacts, there will be increased construction activity around that neighborhood, we need to be conscious of. Um, and also there'll be a temporary ru- reroute of the Sacagawea Heritage Trail likely during the summer, so that would be an impact to people, to users of that trail. Um, we will have a, a reroute that will safely get, you know, families and kids and stuff around this area of construction, so that the trail won't be discontinuous through a project, but that could be perceived as an impact. Um, regarding economic impacts, there aren't any anticipated long-term detrimental impacts to the community based off of this project occurring. Uh, the project will allow Pasco to continue to grow, um, and we'll see continued increase revenue and job production from this work, allowing the city to go. Um, and as an aside, that wasn't in the slide, but the, the city's portion of this work, um, would likely be paid for out of the utility rates, so it won't be an additional burden to taxpayers. With that being said, is there any, any feedback or questions from council or the public regarding this project?
Thank you for that. Any questions or comments from council, uh, Mayor Protim Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor Barajas, and thank you for the presentation. Um, and so before we do the public meeting, I just had a question, and I, I don't think, there's a lot of people in our audience here that are here to talk about this item, so I just wanna ask a couple, a couple, I, I wanna help are basic questions, but questions that might be interesting for the community.
Yeah.
So, long-term, do, um, are there going to be, you know, the operations of this expansion, are they going to increase odor, um, traffic or other?
So, the, this project won't um, detrimentally impact odor, but we did keep odor in mind in that as we selected equipment and such. Um, we kept, we selected equipment that is compatible with odor-reducing measures in the future. So our actual improvements won't substantially reduce odor, but we're not doing something that we would have to undo if odor control measures were put in place.
Great, noise or traffic, any, is there any uh, long, long-term operational um, impacts of this expansion? Are they gonna, are the neighbors gonna notice anything different than they would notice today?
Not immediately, as Pasco grows, the plant will be busier, because there'll be more, more work occurring. Um, I think uh, our plant manager there is looking at hiring, you know, a few more hands to help. Um, so there'll be more, as the city grows, there'll be more activity because they're processing more waste at the facility, but there's not an immediate increase in activity due to this project.
Great, I think those are, I guess, if I was a neighbor out there, those things I'd be pretty much, thank you.
Good question, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Roach and Councilman Serrano, do you have any questions or comments?
None here.
None at this time, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and with no further questions, thank you so much for the presentation, we appreciate the information.
So if I, if I may, um, uh, not Craig Briggs over there, um, Mr. Ferguson, um, do, so we need to make a motion to commence a public meeting? And then we have a public meeting, and then we adjourn a public meeting, I'm, I guess I'm not sure I understand the motion here.
No, I think uh, at this point, this is just an opportunity for the public, so uh, it's just a community engagement event, I'll let Mr. Worley correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I think uh, it's just a, an opportunity for the mayor to open it up to the floor, if anybody'd like to come and speak to council on this and, and have any questions, but it's, it doesn't sound like it's anything formal. Uh, it's more of just a community engagement activity.
Agreed, we, we have a motion in front of us to uh, commence a public meeting, so that was unusual to me, and I, um.
You, you could certainly do it by motion, yeah.
If we don't need to, I would like not to.
Sure.
So we'll, we'll commence a public meeting, uh, do we need, so here's where I'm also confused, do we need to set a date, is it for now?
I think it's just for tonight, this was advertised for tonight, so if there's uh, members of the public that wanna speak to this particular project, now would be the time.
Perfect, so if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on this particular item, please approach the uh, podium. And seeing that there's no public comment at this time, we'll move forward, do we still need a motion?
That, that's really all we needed to do is take public input, and it has to do with the type of funding. So the, the type of funding requires a meeting in, before the public, where the public would have an opportunity to weigh in on this particular project.
Okay. No further, no further actions to take on this item, so we'll move on to item ten on our agenda, unfinished business. Does anyone wish to share anything? There's nothing listed, so we'll move on to item eleven, any new business? Also none listed. Item twelve on our agenda, miscellaneous discussion. City Manager?
Well, good evening again, Mayor and Council, so we did have a, a few um, comments already about uh, Fourth of July, uh, some of the councilmembers' personal experiences and so forth. Uh, and their observations of the event, I did wanna have uh, break this into three parts, because we have, we have the celebration itself, and I, I think it's important for the public to hear from uh, Director Racki talk a little bit about the events, uh, what are, what the community experience was. But we also have the enforcement piece, I want the chief to make a few comments about that, and then the, certainly the fire uh, and uh, associated injuries type uh, incidents that might have occurred, uh, of course, it only happened last night, so this is just uh, you know, our, for, our own first impressions, uh, based on some raw data we were able to accumulate through the evening and, and look at quickly today. We can provide council more detailed analysis at a future meeting, but uh, if we could kick off with Director Racki.
Yeah. Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Zabel and members of council, yeah, so just wanna give us some fair thanks to city staff that really put in a big effort for uh, all the events over the weekend. We do know it's the biggest Fourth of July celebration in the Tri-Cities, and it's traditionally Pasco's main event, so we were glad to hold it, I know the last couple of years, it's been uh, you know, at, at different levels, so uh, just, we got some statistics uh, from our staff this morning, just wanted to share. Um, beginning Saturday, we had a hundred and sixty participants riding from two to seven miles each at the family bike ride, so we did have that Saturday event. Um, beginning uh, yesterday morning, Kiwanis served over twelve hundred people at the pancake feed in the park. Um, didn't have a whole lot of issues just from a parks perspective, um, in that area as well. Uh, the parade had eighty-six participants, so I think a, a council member mentioned that, you know, seventy or over, but there was eighty-six, so a lot of participants. And estimated twenty thousand uh, Tri-City residents in attendance along the parade route, which was expanded this year to accommodate uh, all of the participation. Um, the cardboard regatta, a council, Mayor Protim Maloney's favorite event, had fourteen participating groups and a hundred and fifty people in attendance, a great event at our pool. Uh, the car show had ninety-three participants with a thousand people kind of milling around there and, and checking things out. And then the fireworks show last night, um, an estimated five thousand people immediately. Um, five thousand people gathering in that immediate area at the Pasco Sporting Complex grounds, or Geesa Stadium, the, the soccer fields, the softball complex and associated parking lots, so um, not to mention, I'm sure, the numerous people from surrounding neighborhoods, or people driving by, hopefully safely, and uh, you know, checking out the fireworks and everything, so really great event from uh, Parks and Rec, Public Works, Fire P D, everyone on staff that put it on, so we're really proud to help serve the community in that way. Any questions on this event?
Uh, Mayor Protim Maloney?
Thank you, and thank you, uh, Director Racki, for the summary of, 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 of all that. Uh, I would note that the, uh, before the fireworks at the stadium, we, there wasn't any pre, um, en- entertainment before the event, and um, I kinda, I'll be honest, I kinda missed that.
Um, can you speak at all to, to what the change was, or if there's a, a source for that? I think I can certainly find the information of why that was changed, um, I don't wanna, you know, speculate on, on the reasons why, we can certainly provide that and take that as feedback for next year. I think in years previous, we had live music, we had a little mini motocross show, uh, to entertain folks, and, and I remember even seeing online, people were lining up pretty early, so uh, yeah, we can certainly take that to the staff, get you an answer.
Great, appreciate that, I, I'd say from, from standing inside the, the stadium, there was fewer, there were few, fewer people in seats than there was la- last year. Um, and uh, this is such a big event, it's, it, as you pointed out, it's a really big event for Pasco, and I would hate for us to, to have, for, for, especially for, I'll be specific, for council to have, in some ways, accidentally skipped on this, so if there's anything that we, that we, we, you know, made a, made a poor decision on in terms of prioritization, I think that, um, we've heard from the council in the past that we really support this event, and so um, I, I just voiced my support for, um, making sure that, that we, we stretch that out if we can, if staff can handle that, and we have the capacity and our staff to continue to do that.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
So, uh, Director Racki mentioned the fireworks show and uh, fireworks, or Fourth of July isn't Fourth of July, I guess, without some fireworks, personal fireworks as well. Uh, the city does allow uh, state-approved fireworks, and we go through a lot of effort to, to try to educate the public, uh, with different ways, uh, through social media and so forth. Um, prior to the Fourth of July, the city also bans already illegal fireworks, but unfortunately, we have a ready supply of illegal fireworks just across the river in Burbank, where a lot of those are uh, purchased and then brought back into town. Uh, and we did experience a, a number of calls, uh, over the uh, Fourth of July weekend, particularly uh, Saturday, or Sunday evening and, and last night. And I wanted the chief to talk a little bit about uh, the enforcement of that, and then uh, uh, Chief Gere and his staff are gonna talk a little bit about, uh, their, some of the fires that they were uh, caught up in, and the, and uh, their own experiences with that, chief.
Thanks, Mr. Zabel, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, Fourth of July is a busy weekend for the police department, probably the biggest, busiest holiday that we have out there, but that's not necessarily negative, it's, there's a lot of people out. The city has a lot of things going on, and uh, And fortunately, unfortunately, fireworks are pivotal to celebrating July 4th. The ban was lifted a few years ago, allowing for ground-only fireworks. And people certainly celebrate that way. And then, as Mr. Zabel said, they bring illegal fireworks from across the river. So just a couple of numbers for you. Over the four-day weekend, starting July 1st, the police department responded to 1,100 calls for service, 200 of those were fireworks calls. On the, on July 4th, the actual celebration, the department responded, the police department responded 293 calls for service with just over 100 of those, 108 of those being specific fireworks calls. If we look back pre-pandemic, 2019, we see on that day, we responded to 90 calls for service for fireworks and 350 calls for service as far as overall for that night. So that's just kind of a picture of what it looks like. We did do a significant social media campaign on our social sites with some videos. You may have saw, you may have seen those. Our officers are encouraging people to attend shows, legal shows, and to purchase their fireworks in Pasco. They can rest assured that those are legal fireworks. And I think any of you that were out, you certainly saw that lots of legal fireworks were being used in those neighborhoods as you were out and around. Unfortunately, there were also a significant amount of illegal fireworks as well. So our officers issued 110 warnings. That means they were making contact with people, encouraging them, you know, if there were illegal fireworks, how to get their legal fireworks. They made four significant seizures of illegal fireworks, issued a citation to one person. It's a, it's a busy, busy weekend, busy time of the year with that activity occurring at night. So the opportunities to actually catch people are challenging. So what we took as a pivot this year was rather than, if we can't catch somebody and take enforcement action, but we know there's things going on, there's lots of people in the streets, somebody, we maybe can't make a case, a criminal case, but somebody is engaging in criminal activity. So we did an enforcement education campaign where we'd actually stop, visit with those people, let them know that we're watching them. Let them know that although we maybe can't make a case right now, we, we are watching or there for future violations. We had a, we had a team out this year of officers just dedicated to those neighborhoods, looking for opportunities to seize illegal fireworks. Our patrol captain was out with that team, working as well in the education enforcement capacity as best as they can. One thing that, again, as Mr. Zabel mentioned, the data is still coming in. It's just numbers we were able to pull together real quick for tonight because we know it's an issue for you as council, curious and wanting to know what's, wanting to know what was going on. With the exception of, we did have an arson in one of the trailer courts. That's going to result in criminal activity, criminal investigation, potentially criminal charges coming out of an arson. Absent that, the reports that my staff, that we were getting back from my staff, is it was a relatively well-behaved weekend with no major crimes, no major shootings, no major assaults. Very encouraging compared to what we've seen. Unfortunately, that's a violent weekend for us typically. So that was encouraging for us. With that, I'd be happy to, I think the fire chief has some data as well, but I'd be happy to answer any questions he might have.
Thank you for that. Any questions from council? Looks like there's no questions.
Well, to follow up on that, actually, our number cruncher extraordinaire Deputy Chief Dunbar will present the numbers. Because I didn't get in bed till 2:30 and I'm a lot older than him, so he got in about the same time. But overall, it wasn't, it wasn't a bad night. What really kind of crippled us was that arson fire that was referenced that tied up many of our resources. But fortunately, our, the fire district surrounding the city was able to pick up the slack a little bit for us and catch probably nine or 10 calls that we didn't have anybody available to go to during that building fire time. So with that, I'm Deputy Chief Dunbar giving you the total numbers. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief Gere, council. Just real quick numbers. It was a little slower for us this year. We had a total of, from 8:00 in the morning yesterday to 8:00 in the morning this morning, 42 total incidents, which was down four from the same time period last year and up slightly from the year before that. So, which was a big increase over 19 when everything was shut down. So of that, we had three less fires this year, only 12 fires. Of those fires, one of them we've already discussed, the, the building fire that really, that had a big impact on what we could respond to during about an hour and a half of time. But we relied on our mutual aid partners to handle several of those calls. The other two fires that took more than a single unit to extinguish were down by the Cable Bridge and right off the Blue Bridge. And there's a couple of our areas that have large grass fields and we've had fires in both those areas before. Even with those, there was two or three units and we had them out. They were both kept fairly, about a tenth of an acre. So really not significant at all. The rest of the fires were all handled by a single unit. In fact, Chief Gere was going to stomp on one, but he decided to let the guys with the fire truck spray a little bit of water. It's probably like four gallons of water, if that. So that's what a majority of the fires were that we had. We stayed up, actually, we had less EMS calls down a little bit. Of that 42 incidents, we did have some what I call duplicate, like the Cable Bridge fire. We had two reports that generated two incident reports from dispatch. They're cranking up there. They just send them out. And so we had basically two incidents from one fire. So even with 42, there's about 10 of them that really were duplicate incidents. So looking at that, we were pretty slow. So that's kind of where we're at with everything unless you guys have more data questions for me.
Any questions or comments? Councilman Campos?
No data and I'm probably going to get a couple dirty looks from both the chiefs here. But I, I got a question. It sounds like in the last few years, we've been really reactive. Chief, I know you guys were out doing patrols or, I mean, so that was actually a big proactive thing. But I've had a thought for a couple of years and this is, just want to put the nugget out there. But why aren't we doing like more block parties and just staffing certain zones and inviting the community to come out? Blow up as much stuff as you want. You've got people on hand. That way you're not chasing, going from area to area to area and, you know, looking at maybe designating zones and have people coming out. Personally, I'm a big fan of the big boomers. I say we should lift the ban on aerials because people are doing them anyways. But I know, I'm sorry, you guys can, you guys can hang me later. But, but that's just something I've been thinking about for the last few years is maybe instead of trying to chase all these things is maybe let's, let's find a way to have people come out. Let's blow stuff up. You've got EMS right there. You got PD right there. Go for it.
We, you won't get a dirty look from me because I think it's really Zach's problem. It's a party and parties fall under Parks and Rec, not under Fire and Police. So I'm fine with the whole idea, councilman. Thank you.
Sweet. That's all.
So with that, I mean, we do have the big Geesa Stadium for a huge block party. Maybe it's just promoting it a little bit more, making it more appealing with live entertainment, maybe. Actually, I do want to step back and say we did have a little bit of live entertainment, being that one of the officer's birthday was yesterday. There's a certain song that comes out and he loves it. And so he performed, he danced. So there was a lot of community members out there pulling out their phones and recording him dance and being interactive with the people that were out there at the stadium. So happy birthday to him and he was our entertainment. City manager.
So I did just want to follow up because I know, I know there's folks perhaps some listening tonight and we got some emails today. I will tell you, my sense is that none of the calls or complaints or incidents were associated with legal fireworks. The fireworks that you lifted the ban on. So they're all really associated with the illegal materials. And we even had a pretty significant incidence of criminal use of fireworks for arson. And that's something Chief alluded to and they'll be investigating and taking that forward. You know, the illegal fireworks just on our border are a problem. We're going to do some noodling this week. And what we might do, maybe it's a legislative thing. I don't know. You know, we certainly don't have any authority or control in Walla Walla County. But I think we need to probably look at this broader. I appreciate Councilmember Campos's comments. Mr. pragmatic over there. But we're going to, we're going to chat a little bit about if there's some way we can curb some of that from coming into our city. You know, we, we are proactive in terms of some of the messaging. Maybe there's a different kind of messaging we can do, good neighbor messaging, you know? That's really what it kind of boils down to. You want to torment your neighbor and their pets for 12 hours or what have you with explosions out in the street? I mean, that's, that's the kind of information we get from folks. And, you know, maybe people aren't really realizing how they're impacting other people, but I don't want to get on a soapbox here. Or I'll get off of it, I guess. I'm already on it. But thank you. I appreciate being able to give you this information tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate the reports, the feedback from what, you know, some numbers of what happened for this past 4th of July. From, you know, from Geesa Stadium, it's my first time attending again. I was sitting in an area where I could see all of Pasco. And even before the stadium started their own fireworks, I could see them all over, even across the river. The very huge aerial, very loud fireworks were out there before the stadium had their own show. It's, it's out there unfortunately or fortunately, I mean, however you want to celebrate. But there's a lot of neighborhoods that have elderly neighbors. And so as you mentioned, you know, maybe out of consideration, we can do something different for these elderly neighborhoods or their pets. But again, you know, it's just something that we should probably do a little bit more education on as far as doing more block parties, if that's an option. Anyway, that's my two cents. Councilwoman Roach, Councilmember Serrano, are there any further comments from you?
None from me. Thank you.
I'm here.
Okay. And with that, we will move on to item 13 on our agenda, executive session. We actually do have need for an agenda. City council will now meet in executive session to discuss qualifications of an applicant candidate for appointment to elective office per RCW 42.30.1101H. The council will be in executive session for 30 minutes until 8:32 with a five-minute break, 8:37. Council is not expected to take further action following the executive session. And with that, we're on a five-minute break. Thank you. Council is not expected to take further action following the executive session, and with that, we're on a five-minute break. Thank you.
And it is now eight thirty seven with no further items on our agenda. This regular meeting is uh now adjourned. Thank you and have a great night.
Thank you. Thank you.